6:30, 2:00. I'll call the Halifax Planning Board into session. On the agenda, we have 6:35, public hearing for special permit, 925 Plymouth Street, for a sign for RJ Automotive. 6:45, we have continuation of the public hearing for the site plan review for special permit number 19 SPR-03, 3:30 Plymouth Street, O'Reilly's. At 7:00 PM, we have Autumn Lane as-built. Minute meetings we have and some bills to pay. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Is that right?
Legal motion to accept the agenda is right.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So if you continue up here...
Oh, never mind.
You're continuing the site plan review.
No, it's a continuance. Not that we... Yes, we have continued it. Tonight is just the continuance.
Okay.
We're not going to continue it if we can't...
So we need to call Carlos on the RJ?
Yeah. And he'll have to be here for the O'Reilly's as well. In session when we do that one.
And he's standing by? Do we have a phone for the speaker or what?
Uh...
My battery's low.
It's my phone.
Hello?
You don't have one?
I got my phone.
You have good battery on it?
As good as it's gonna be, I think. How long do we need it for? We talking hours or half hour?
No.
Like...
I only got 46%.
Yeah, I'm like three-quarters full.
You're right.
I'll call Carlos.
What's his number? Oh, it's on here somewhere. Does he know what call him right now?
If you guys ever read my number into the record. Just want to have a look over there.
Oh, yeah. Just to...
So we have to motion to suspend and open. Lot of that.
We have to wait for him before I make that motion.
Hey, Carlos, Jonathan Sroko, planning board. How's it going? Doing good. I got elected to put you... I'll use my phone to put you on speaker, so you're the lucky one. All right, I'm gonna put you on speaker right now, all right? You are on speaker.
Hey, guys, take a look at the...
Hey, how's your doing?
Great.
All right, um, we get a motion to... I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the regular scheduled Halifax Planning Board meeting and open the public hearing for special permit at 925 Plymouth Street for RJ Automotive. Okay, you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Was Rich coming in or...
No, he's not able to affect...
He had a family emergency and a representative.
All right, so we had the hearing and we continued it to tonight. Is there anything else to be added to the evidence?
Yeah. Just up to getting Jonathan up to speed and letting him know. So he was in earlier and basically he's looking for an increase in the sign. He's over the 100 feet off of the road, so we already qualified from relief citing the location of the building, the size of the sign, the fact that it's text only, and the size of the actual graphic. I see no problem with it.
Yeah, he came in here before with a rough copy when he first proposed it, so it's pretty much the same. The only thing is, is I remember you, he was saying he wanted to do an incorporated. Is it still... Is that still part of it?
Yeah, it's now incorporated.
Okay.
As of this morning.
Does that have to be... Does the spec actually have to be on his filings or whatever?
Is it gonna say ink on the end?
Yeah.
Of course.
Well, the size of the sign, like, though.
No, size of the sign is not gonna change, so it doesn't matter about the actual graphic or anything like that, right? I'm just not sure that the standards of sign, the full standards would change.
So are there any comments or questions?
I have none.
Anything, Carlos? Okay, is there a motion for the special permit for the 4x26 sign at 925 Plymouth Street, RJ Automotive Inc.?
Make a motion to approve the sign at 925 Plymouth Street for RJ Automotive for the proposed sign of 4 feet by 26 feet?
On the building?
On the building.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
The second. Oh, there you go. Carlos seconded in. He was quick here.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do a voice vote.
Do a voice vote? Carlos?
Yep.
Hi.
Yep.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Go in, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We got twice approved.
I'll be sent in a letter out, and there's a 20-day waiting period, so I can expel that to you guys next week.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right, we have a motion to... Motion to close the...
Make a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular scheduled Halifax Planning Board meeting.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They've closed the hearing, so we're not adding anything to it. It's basically either a determination or continuance tonight.
On...
On O'Reilly's. Remember, we closed it at the last meeting, so there's no additional information that can be brought forward.
So is Carlos still gonna be in for this?
Who said that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan. Oh, you need those?
Yep.
No, are we...
Well, we won't be opening anything, so we can actually probably get started.
Can we place some bills?
Yep.
Place some bills.
Just got the other one marked?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to pay a bill to WB Mason in the amount of $96.24 for office supplies.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want us to sign for you, Carlos?
We need to do it.
I think Jonathan's practicing.
It's just an X. Where's the date on here? Am I missing this again? Oh, right there. All right. Make a motion to pay a bill for April 18, 2019, for Armory Engineers PC PO Box 1768 in Duxbury, Mass., for invoice number 15052 for review services of Riley Auto Parts Site Plan Review and Reports in the amount of $1,845.52.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, time being 6:45. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
When are we opening it?
I'm gonna continue. Make a motion to suspend the regular scheduled Halifax Planning Board meeting and continue.
No.
We closed the meeting at the last...
So this shouldn't say continue.
We closed the public hearing at the last meeting. Yeah. So we're basically just...
Okay.
Doing any further discussion between the board and making a determination.
Okay, we're open. Carlos, we're now open on the site plan review for O'Reilly's.
Greg, it?
I think somebody's...
We got some answers, but...
Yep. I think we... I was able to see the email. As far as the response to all those questions, I think those satisfied anything that I had. Some of the ones that didn't, you know, they had no comment back, didn't really have an
We have a copy of the plan again.
The most recent one. We didn't bring there one.
What's that? Well, I'll do that then.
We took one home last week, remember?
Took it out and left it on the side.
How's the note of agreement, the property on the property that refers in agreement? That looked good too as far as connecting that, and if not, then, you know, that will might be bottom of the deal. If it doesn't exist, then...
I remember seeing this, a lot of these plans beforehand, too. Terry, didn't you have these plans, like, long in advance? Like, I think almost all over three meetings ago?
Yeah, so we kinda looked at some preliminary plans.
Would this sit hard?
No.
Would this sit this way?
Most of this. Would be a kind of swell in between.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gonna be gonna have some sort of, what could be a river in between that.
Oh, no, there's a, there's a small area. Everything else is going towards it because reasons aren't sites, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It just looks, I think we're gonna stand all the way down.
Cause this is the favor.
Oh, I got you, I got you, I got you.
No, we're still talking. If this... Go into the pipe?
Yep.
For maybe even around it, like with another pipe? I spoke with John Peck. He said he has no problem allowing a pipe to go around.
Has anybody spoken to them?
I tried to go up there and talk to somebody and got no response up there.
No surprise.
I don't know. Did you go to the conservation meeting, Mike?
Yeah, we got through the conservation.
Is the pipe there?
No. But they did, I think they did say they were gonna start fining them.
$300 a day?
No, they said they... They said that they'd be in touch with us, with the bank. When they got in touch with the bank.
Yes, but they were gonna start fining them. They were gonna send them a letter every day and stop fining them $300 a day.
If they don't acknowledge.
If they don't acknowledge, until they acknowledge. So you were at the conservation meeting, too? Yes.
I don't know if they did that or not, or whether it was just Tom missed that.
We need to get that other coffee.
I'm gonna take it.
Apparently, oh, the other seven.
You get the lighting done, you're not casting any light outside the site.
Oh, shit. What makes that? How you getting deliveries there? With tractor trailer?
WB5, yeah.
There's some hanging here.
Doesn't pay to him yet. That's it, how they deliver it, deliver it for O'Reilly's.
You're obviously, you'd have parking spots here, so your deliveries would be at night, not during the day?
At the end of the day.
In the morning?
So is it the morning or... I think the dumpster pick-up is. It's in, it's in newly...
I'm sorry, I might have said that wrong. I thought it was 7:00 AM, like, before business.
It might be. I think it's, I think it's at the beginning of the day.
Dumpster be closed, so the delivery is from 7:00 to 7:00 PM.
That's the case. Delivery spots, right?
No, I mean, it makes, it makes the turn without disrupting harder.
You could back out of that spot, can't you?
Oh, yeah, no, no, when they're there, when they're loading, yeah, you'd have to, they'd have to wait, yeah.
Do you have a fire zone? I don't see a fire zone. Really don't think you have a fire zone for a lot of the...
Yes.
Or... I guess that would be my only, I don't think, there'd be some central parking spaces going, with a tractor there. Park right there. You open that. Or 12 spaces going.
And while they're on load?
While they're on load. That's my only, I mean, that may be minimal, but that's the only thing, only thing that I would see.
We could definitely refrain from, from having deliveries done within the peak hour, which is gonna give us about 14 to 15 people there.
Yeah.
Every other hour, you know, it's like two to one, you know, so... But, yeah, maximum space requirement really is only, is only 15. Granted, O'Reilly's likes to have about 32 to 36. But, yeah, we could definitely put it in the conditions not to deliver during, I think the peak hours are...
I think, I think your delivery truck's gonna come when, when it's probably convenient for them, too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's, that's gonna be. I'm just, that's the only thing, I... It's a tou, it's a tough spot, because where, where else would your, your truck, your, your delivery truck guy's not gonna park on the street and bring it in or anything like that? That's the only thing I just noticed, that's all. That's all.
I mean, they'll, they'll be there, they can definitely move. It's kind of the same situation with, like, anybody who, who, when they load gas stations, if you're willing, you know...
Sometimes you accommodate for a person or what?
Right. But probably less than two.
Less than two.
And there is, the, the site does provide for any stall time, like, there's, there's more than the space required for one of those trucks if it had to be, if you know what I mean.
Subject system over here? Was it, it could be over here, it could be on the other plane? We have four?
Actually, we have 2.5.
One?
2.21, sorry, there's a...
Oh, there it is.
In the parking lot.
We have had initial review of the subject design, and we've provided response to comments, and Kathy says everything looks pretty good. We'll have a board meeting kind of first to see if they have any questions or comments regarding that.
Oh, it's cool that, that they worked with you on that.
Yeah.
Makes sense in that situation.
I mean, she, she said, obviously, fish to the board, but she has no problem with it. They've done it in the past. The only thing that they may recommend, the board may recommend, is that if, if there's ever a change in use, you put it in as a deed restriction to say you have to come back to the planning board, to the, to the...
It's next to that there.
And, and have to revise the subject report.
Yeah, because if you took that same square footage with it from her, it was...
It might be, it might be so. So we will, we're definitely okay with that, with that agreement on that, so...
So, anything else? Carlos, are you good?
Thanks, Doc.
I think we... I just wanna make sure that we have a couple things that we... Conditions that we set forth. Do I have to go over them again, or can I just cite them in, in my motion? Can I just say?
Make a motion to approve the site plan, 19 SPR-03 at 3:30 Plymouth Street for O'Reilly Auto Parts, meeting the conditions set forth prior.
I think we gotta mention what they are. Yeah, I think you gotta mention them.
That's why I was, didn't I just ask that question?
Well, by the draft, and then we, I know that we wanted to put some type of condition as far as the additional coverage if they found a pipe.
Yep.
And we, I don't know, Albert, I don't know that with the highway department.
The way I interpreted it, especially with the response we got, is basically it was up to the town. If the town were to not discover the pipe, not investigate, then there would be no action taken, right? Did everyone else get that same impression? Like, if they find a pipe, then the owners are willing to do the work, but if the town doesn't investigate, doesn't find a pipe, then...
The town shouldn't be there to begin with.
Right, so, so, so what I'm saying is, is if the town doesn't go out there and find the pipe, I don't think that they are responsible for putting the pipe in, or finding it, or connecting it to the town. I don't know if anyone else feels the same way, but that's the impression I got, is that it's the town's issue. If they don't do anything about it, we weren't gonna put that on someone else. Does anyone feel differently?
Well, I thi, I think the intent was that if O'Reilly's was going to accommodate the town's overflow, then it wouldn't be on them as a burden to do the rest of the work.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, is it's all under the town finding out whether or not that pipe connects, right?
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the kind of the sticky part of the whole thing is... The sticky part is the bank and the town. Well, the pipe is there, the bank is not really the sticky part, because there's an easement to the pipe. There's not an easement, though, for the water to go over our land. Yeah, but that's, that's kind of on the bank, that's not... Right. For O'Reilly's. So we're kind of trying to separate the two things. I know. But that's gonna just add more water to the field, the wetlands that, that's really not wetlands. If it's not in the pipe. So... I mean, tomorrow we're supposed to get two winters, maybe, you'd say? Somebody oughta go down and take a quick look at...
All right, so I happened to drive by there the other morning when we were getting that downpour.
Yeah.
And there was even a huge truck in front of me that did not go in the right lane, if you know what I mean. Like, it was a huge truck that also veered around. So there is an issue there.
Water in the street.
That water was so, there was so much water in the street that even trucks were driving around.
Right.
You know, I mean, it was clearly an issue. It, it just seemed like the, the understanding was, is that the town was gonna try to figure out whether or not that pipe was there, whether existed or where it went. If the town doesn't do that, I don't think anyone else should be responsible for it.
Actually, the town should be cut it right off.
Actually, the town should be cut it right off.
The, the point being that if O'Reilly's is going to accommodate the overflow, then the town needs to pick up.
Yes, but then everybody else is down the road here is accommodating everybody.
Correct.
Which, we're, you know, we're getting the brunt of this. So, somebody's gonna try to nip it in the bud, you know what I mean, as far as we're getting dumped on. I mean, the field is just like a pond. So. And then there's, like I said, there's gonna be two other places out there that are gonna be tied in somewhere along the line, like everybody across the street. That shouldn't be tied in, but his grandfather probably way back when, and now it's coming out into the field. And we've been fighting this now for a long, long time.
Yeah, I also am still under the understanding that that's really where the water always had been going. Right?
It was a chicken house drain.
And the chicken house drain that became the town's drain somehow.
And the town took it over. And the people across the street took the bound drain over.
So, and then they filled all the towns in. That took the drains. That was allowed somewhere along the line.
Yeah, it was back then. They did what they had to do, I assume.
That wasn't that long ago.
Well, we're, we, basically, we really just need to decide how we're gonna handle if we can actually force the highway department to do what we're kinda thinking of. That's really the question. We've been over this for the past three meetings, so.
Right, it's in the town's best interest.
We're gonna check that.
It's in the town's best interest to check this out, and I don't see why it wouldn't be up to the town to see if.
What they're basically saying is we can't put a condition on them to make the town do, you know, a plan?
Agreed, a hundred percent. That's what I'm saying. If the town does not do that, they shouldn't be responsible to do it. That, that's, that's my standpoint, is that it, it's in the town's best interest to do it.
Right, if we can get the highway department to do something and they find the pipe, then they are willing to connect to it, but we can't put a condition on them.
Agreed.
To make the town, the highway department do this. That's basically my point. If the town does it and they find it, they're willing to put in that extra manhole and connect the pipe. That's my understanding.
The whole issue is. The pipe under the bank, the drain.
The whole, the whole issue is, is O'Reilly's does not have to grant an easement to the town.
Right.
So.
I mean, I can certainly.
The condition.
Casey had given to me.
The, the condition would be that, you know, O'Reilly's will grant the town an easement if they can connect it.
How good would that be?
That's, that's different. Because that puts all the research and everything on O'Reilly's.
Not necessarily.
Yes.
If O'Reilly's, O'Reilly's doesn't have to grant the easement. If, if the town doesn't step up and do it.
Right.
O'Reilly's doesn't have to grant the easement.
I didn't think you were actually granting an easement.
No, I was, we were just, we were just supplying the. If you, if you guys were to find the pipe, yeah, we were just gonna tie into it.
We're talking about from the town.
Oh, okay. Um, I mean, if. We, we could grant an easement if you, if you wanted to, um, I don't think they'd have an issue with that. But I thought you guys were still talking about the, the pipe side.
Trying to tie two things together.
Alright, so then, in other words, if you grant the easement, that you're taking responsibility for the town's water?
I'm still not sure what easement we're granting.
I think they're talking about the pipe coming from the street that, that we're improving upon.
Okay.
Which there is no easement for right now.
I, yeah, I just didn't think that the plan included deeding out an easement.
We, we did not have that at the time.
I just assumed it was, they were willing to physically take the pipe, connect it, and allow it to run through their property, as long as the town could figure out, yeah, as long as the town took on to figure out it's their pipe, figure out where it is and if it exists. Right? Town's pipe. They're willing to work with it.
Right.
All they're asking is that the town figures out where the pipe is and if it's usable.
Right.
Okay.
So if the pipe is not there though, what happens?
I would say that the plan proceeds as proposed and that pipe is dead-ended, which, or is no longer connected, which would, in my mind, have less runoff into the back for you guys.
Except for the fact that it'll come through the bank.
Right.
Because as the water goes on the street, it goes.
But it's again, but, but in this hypothetical we're discussing, this is the town not taking their option to protect their interests.
Correct.
So that in this hypothetical, the town has for some reason decided not to investigate that. I, I, I don't see that happening. It's not in the town's best interest. All the town has to do is discover the pipe, figure out if it's usable, and then O'Reilly's is willing to take it from there. I think, I think they're being generous. I think the town has a great opportunity to address their issue.
Alright, I agree.
Why doesn't the town? Why doesn't the town, the town knows the pipe is there.
Right, why don't?
The town knows the pipe is there, 'cause they opened it up. 'Cause we were told it was blocked off, and everything went down to the fire station when the road was done over. And now we find out through this meetings that it's open and it's draining and.
Yeah, so that way if the town, if the town doesn't decide for whatever reason to investigate it, and they don't connect anything to anything, it stays how it is, they do exactly their work proposed, and whatever water that they thought they had that was somehow going from one oh six to that back corner of that property will no longer go that way.
Yeah, but you gotta block it off. The town doesn't wanna do anything to block it off.
But, but it just won't exist and it won't connect, so then you'd be all set, right? Cause then we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be sending any of the one oh six water back through the O'Reilly property to discharge into the wet.
Right, let's get it on the bank.
Now, can that pipe?
But you see what I'm saying, that, and that, again, which is now still the town's issue, and now it's self-inflicted on the town because they didn't act
Right.
when they could have.
Right.
Right?
Now, what about the pipe that, that's under the, the, um.
Bank.
The bank?
That's what they wanna tie into.
That's what I thought you guys were referring to, to tie into the overflow. I always thought the other pipe was always gonna be part of the design. Um, I thought they were talking about the pipe that's dead ends at the bank.
Right.
And then they thought it might go more towards our property, and then we would put something on top of that to make it go through the bank's, um.
Right, the overflow.
Correct.
I think the other pipe, we, we would, we were.
But we're, we're trying to connect the two together and say, okay. If you're, if you're gonna allow this, then somebody else has gotta pitch in here.
Gotcha.
I mean, is O'Reilly's willing to do that extra work?
O'Reilly's is willing to do the, the pipe that's proposed in the plan now.
Correct.
They, they, with condition for the overflow to connect into the pipe going through the bank, if it comes to our property, we are willing to do that with a condition.
Right.
But if that bank pipe doesn't come to our property and it does dead-end at the bank like maybe we think it might, then we, we won't put any additional structure on for overflow purposes to connect to that pipe. That was kind of.
But if the pipe were there and it was brought to your property, you would use it?
Um, it would probably have to be during construction. I don't think you wanna go in and like, but yes, if, if, yeah.
There, your overflow.
Yeah.
Everybody's overflow because.
That, that's the, that's the, I, the, the thought process behind the, what I thought we were discussing tonight. The other one, we were always gonna put in there because even though we're improving or we're raising it up, we still think it's probably a necessity in the highway department, who probably thinks it's a necessity to have it because of your problem on one oh six. Um, so we're just trying to improve that pipe, even though it's daylighting out, um, to, to the rear instead of, instead of just bombing into the ground and backing up and not having a relief. But to improve that, we raised it up over, at the kinda height of the crown, and, um, we added that, uh, driveway spillway to come and drain around. Yeah.
Now, what can we do about the bank?
We're working on it with conservation.
What's that?
We're working on it with conservation.
Oh, oh, are they going to sign the name?
Yep.
Alright, so, just thought I would let you go.
Alright, here we go.
I withdraw my motion.
Is John willing to put the pipe into?
John?
He's willing to do an easement.
Yeah, right.
But if, if you got the easement and the town put the pipe in, I think everything could work.
Well, the easement is already there.
Only to the, only to the bank.
Oh, from O'Reilly's.
And the town, and the town's overflow.
But the easement only goes to the edge of the bank.
Right.
Okay. You get that figured out now?
Well, like I said, um, Casey was nice enough to give us a condition regarding all of that, and I can put that into the decision letter, cause they were willing to do that. I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood all.
And that's all written out?
Yeah, he, he, didn't I send you guys the email?
The one in the email? Oh, he's willing to accept that condition that's in there?
They're willing to accept that condition. Pipe and the highway department, if they investigate and all that, so. I didn't put it on ours, cause we were, this is just a draft anyway.
Yeah. Can, can we get a copy of that to have a the meeting?
Would this, you want me to?
Yeah, if, if you can, just so it's at the meeting, it's part of the meeting room.
With the digital copy?
Yeah. Carlos thought this was gonna be a quick meeting. Did he drop?
No, he's stuck. He put it on, he put it on mute.
Probably put it on mute, we didn't have to listen to the cars.
See?
I see him, I'm still here.
They have no faith in you, Carlos.
Yes, we do.
I don't know if we've experienced a quick meeting yet. My bad, guys.
I think we had one once.
No, we've had, we've had a few. Yeah, Casey wasn't there.
Thank you.
You guys can bridge that if you want, kind of stories.
Did you leave that one?
I'll leave that tomorrow to, to summarize.
Yep. Alright, so that's right.
Yeah, that seems more written in well. Well structured in a sense that it's not a question associated with it.
So the conditional approval of a potential storm tie-in for the basin overflow. During the site plan review permitting process, the location of the existing stormwater drain pipe was presented to the board. Pictures of the drain pipe indicated that it traversed the mutual bank property and outletted into an existing swale located in a residential neighborhood, neighboring property south of the bank. The location of the style of the pipe is unknown at this time. According to the pictures, the neighbors' testimony, the pipe supposedly stops at the bank's property line. If the said pipe continues and happens to traverse three thirty Plymouth Street in any way, then the applicant will provide drainage structure to tie into the pipe so that the stormwater overflow associated with the proposed infiltration basin would be conveyed into this pipe rather than to the rear of the property over the adjacent ditches of Mr. Peck's property. The town highway department will verify if the pipe has connection to the three thirty Plymouth Street through means of video snaking or excavating. If this pipe does not traverse the property over three, property of three thirty Plymouth Street, then the applicant and O'Reilly's Auto Pots do not install the tie-in structure.
And that's if the highway department does investigate, just to clear.
So that would go on your side as well?
So if they don't investigate, they're gonna be shut off.
That would be, uh. And what's the feeling of the board for that?
I think it's in the town's best interest to investigate that.
Yeah.
But if they don't?
I mean, it's up to the highway, I mean, I hope this, to the highway surveyor, and he said that it would be interesting to do it.
What's that?
The highway surveyor said it would be interesting to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, logically, that's what you do. I can't see any group of people saying, nah, don't look at that. I, I don't see that happen. But in the same thing, I also think that since it's in the town's best interest, they should be the responsible party, because it's their pipe. You know what I mean? I think they should be the responsible party, and I just don't see someone deciding not to do it.
But if they don't do it, they should be shut off.
Yeah, they shouldn't have access to the pipe anymore, right?
Exactly.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yeah, and, and I think that would actually eliminate some stuff.
Yeah. I mean, that field out there, I mean, I had pictures of it. I mean, you could look there now, it's like a pond, the whole, the whole field.
Oh yeah, it's probably hit hard this week, right?
It's very wet out there right now, and the bank retention pond is right up to the top. And we got more rain coming, heavy rains for Saturday.
But, I mean, that seems to be the logical solution, right?
Right, yeah.
So with that contained in the conditions?
But you should be taking responsibility, um, you know.
Hey, if we get to construction, and we see it, you know, we gotta get to construction first, huh?
If you give them the, the.
They have to go ahead, yeah. Right? Um, okay, anything else?
Do I cite the other conditions?
Were you gonna put these conditions in there?
I'd love to. I'd also like the site. I would like to cite the other site conditions. Would be that the hours of operation will be between seven AM and ten PM. Condition, uh, that is condition one. Condition two would be that the signs must be submitted for final approval and permitted by the zoning enforcement officer to meet all sign-by laws. Condition three, the applicant agrees to maintain all stormwater piping, structures, hydrodynamic separator and infiltration basin per approved plans and the submitted operation maintenance plan included as part of the engineering report. Condition four, the applicant agrees to maintain parking areas suitable to the town's standards. Number five, the dumpster pickup will occur before the seven AM opening. Number six, delivery times will be between seven AM and seven PM.
But not during peak hours.
But not during peak hours.
Sure. Sure.
Condition seven, that a fire protection engineer be brought in to assist the fire department with plan review, revisions, and ensuring that an applicable CMRs and standards are followed. Condition eight, the Halifax Board of Health shall approve applicant's sub-circus sewage disposal system. Number nine, no outdoor loudspeaker public address system shall be permitted. Number 10, no outside sales or flea market operations shall be permitted on site. Number 11, no unregistered vehicles are allowed or stored on the property. Number 11.
Sorry.
Lighting shall be shielded. Lighting shall be shielded in such a manner so as to minimize glare and adverse impact to the residents of Ottingworth Site. Condition 12, outside lighting shall be turned off at the same time the store closes except in emergency situations or for maintenance and except for lights for safety or night watch purposes. Number 13, a performance guarantee in the amount of $0 will be submitted to the town of Halifax and shall be held in account under penalty of both the applicant and the town's name. Not applicable. Number 14, approved activity shall be completed within two years but may be extended by the planning board if satisfactory evidence that unusual circumstances have prevented completion within the specified time.
Okay, there's a motion. It was the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gonna take a voice vote? Gonna do a voice vote?
Carlos says yes.
Yep, it's a aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Go with the yes.
Okay.
Can I have a question with that?
Once it's written up and we have it signed, I have to get it fully written up and signed.
You just wanna give a copy of this?
Yes. Okay, I think we're all set with you, Mr. Carlos. Thank you.
Aye, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye. You just dismissed him?
He's lucky, he's off the hook.
He motioned to a chair very quickly.
Now, should we wait for any signing of anything until Carlos is here in person?
Yeah.
And I can get this all ready.
Do you need me to be at that meeting?
Not necessarily.
Let me know.
Yeah, I'd like to go home, stay late.
I am the curse, I follow that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the answer.
Yeah, before, good luck.
Thank you for listening, Carlos.
Yeah, give a vote. How'd that work?
Hope so.
It should.
We'll be back.
Oh, no.
So we get the minutes?
No, we don't have any minutes.
Okay, so we took care of the bills?
Bills were taken care of.
Stop and Shop, who's going over there for cake?
I can't...
I got the email.
I'm good.
Regarding, they want to do directory signs for their online pickup thing.
Submit a permit.
I told them I would, well, they still have to go through the building for a sign permit. But I told them that I wanted to pass it by you guys first, which I gave you all my copies of that. And the second page is, I just blew it up so you could actually see it a little bit better as far as measurements.
So it's really just parking lot management, right? Like it's all inside the parking lot?
Yeah.
Nothing out at 106?
Basically just handy, like where they...
So we're gonna just run the packages out and you just grab them and go?
Well, yeah, it looks like they're doing it at Walmart. Walmart's probably right around the corner.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, Walmart's doing this right now, where they bring your stuff up to you.
Oh, really?
Not this Walmart yet, but they, they're starting to convert a lot of them. Yeah. Stop and Shop's been doing this for a long time where you go pick up your groceries. They have a specific designated spot over there at that Stop and Shop. It's like right here.
I try to get groceries at Stop and Shop.
This little area. Well, this area right here is like K-Pod, pickup or whatever.
Yeah, so they actually...
They're gonna want it. It's the same area. That's like literally the same area.
So if you guys are okay with it other than making sure that the signs meet written bylaws, I'll just email them and let them know.
Yeah.
They weren't looking for special permits?
They don't even vote on anything, do they? Hmm, I might not be okay with it.
We also received ask-built for autumn week.
No way.
Yeah, if you wanna talk to me.
Sure.
It's not just waiting?
No, no. This is a substantial...
And it works for the longest time? Wait, isn't this the one where that guy took it over? Took over the property, different one?
This one looks old.
Oh, all right.
1995.
Oh, my God, that was five years old. That's how old this is?
Yeah, we've been struggling with it for, since about three years after that.
Yeah, kids these days.
Why'd they have to give it on?
Because they record things.
Whenever we do like the site plan, they never...
Site plan is to have to be recorded unless it's special permit.
Yeah, it's something...
Drainage or anything like that?
Yeah, the easement.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right.
We have to record easement. So it goes with the road. And then the electrical easements. I'm trying to see those. There's a 10-foot tree easement too. Should the people have taken them out? And the client of them, they would take them out. Well, this one obviously isn't gonna be ready to accept this year.
I don't know if they've been...
It's not after this. We've promised this a long time. When was the last review on this one?
I believe it was last week. But I don't know. I don't think I've gotten a review from my, uh, marijuana associates for doing the review. I don't think I've gotten a review back from them yet.
Okay.
But I can double-check on that and...
We can hold these off until we get the review back.
Hold on.
That's good. Okay. Fantastic.
And then the last thing we have is...
So many changes.
So many changes that have been presented. I have advertised for a public hearing for May 9th.
Who's presenting this?
Board of Selectmen gave them to me.
Gave them to you to present?
You make the presentation?
You make the presentation?
No, I do not do that. They presented it to me for a public hearing through the planning board.
Oh.
In the paper, I have a side about the towns and OCPC and...
Because these aren't presented by the planning board. Usually, so soon as presented.
I think the...
Oh, my gosh.
The first two, oh, sorry, the... Yeah.
In any district here permitted, no use of the premises shall be authorized or extended and no building or structure shall be erected or enlarged unless provided such extension or extension of a large length of off-street pile of hill parking space without 300 feet of... What? There is so much. Oh, what? How does a normal person read that? 16714, uh, off-street parking. Try and understand the full sentence.
No, this isn't, this is just in there. This isn't this.
Oh, my bad.
This is our bylaws.
That was the bylaw that she picked out for us for the parking.
But still...
For O'Reilly's.
It makes sense to that. Still, 16714 off-site, why?
Merely just a guideline.
It's merely just not making any sense. I didn't even take a walk last, just understand that.
Just like the lines on the road. It's just a suggestion.
Oh, bringing up marijuana establishments again, huh?
Yeah, I don't think the Board of Selectmen actually have started that. I think there was a petition.
Oh, industrial and business district, huh? Shot it down last year. See what happens at the meeting?
What's that?
Did the same thing last year.
What's that?
Tried to get a marijuana establishment and business district.
Um, I think they...
And then shot it down. They won't know.
Oh, they're just trying the same thing again?
Yeah, it seems like it.
Somebody was in there actually talking about extending certain zones to...
That would be for...
Yeah.
But that's not what this is, right?
This is going from just industrial with special permit to now special permit for business and industrial.
Oh.
But there's also something funky too. So like 56 is changing our definitions from like 94H, 94G.
That, I think, has to do with Mass State law.
Yeah.
I think there may have been a typo or something. I'm not really sure on that one. But it's just gone from 94H to G. So I think that's, that's Mass General laws chapters that have changed. So we have to have our bylaws reflect what Mass State is requiring.
Because chapter 94H goes over off-site premises parking. Yeah.
It's also strange because of like it's reverting back.
It's... Yeah, so they don't run into...
You know what I mean? It's not like they made a change and they're adding it. They made a change and now they're reverting, assuming that they're...
It basically says the same thing.
That's gonna, that would basically have to go through. I don't know why this code. It's literally a law change.
All right.
And essentially, we really don't have anything on the general plan. And this, I had, I couldn't go to a maintenance night. Motion to cancel May 2nd.
I 100% agree.
We don't have anything for...
100% agree.
Not at this point.
What do we have, anything pending?
Yes, there is.
We cleaned up everything?
We can still have a meeting on the 2nd if you prefer.
Hmm.
But that would give us three meetings in a row.
It is the National Day of... I'm surprised we have anything scheduled at all.
I would say motion to not have May 2nd meeting.
A motion is for second?
Yeah, it's not a second though.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got a vacation. Any other motions?
I think there's a motion to adjourn too.
Is there a second?
A second, that, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.